That comes out in 2016. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the August 2, 2016 Agenda as amended. Everyone should have a packet in here, so we will be using the amended Agenda for this afternoon. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Carol Sutter that we approve the amended Agenda for August 2, 2016. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We will accept the amended Agenda. Our next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 5, 2016. And unless there are any corrections to them, we have a motion to approve or we do have those corrections at this time.
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Davis in second that we approve the minutes for the regular meeting on July 5, 2016. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. The minutes of the regular meeting have been approved and they will be placed on file. Next is a financial report for June 2, 2016. Staff report.
This is Anderson with staff. So this is the June 2, 2016 budget report. So this is our end of the fiscal year. So as you can see, we should be at 100 percent. We are actually over 100 percent. We're at 117 percent total for revenue. And as you can see at the bottom of these pages, it view only have about four pages of the 14-page report. But for expenses, we're actually at about 95 percent total. So we actually brought more money than expected into the city and spent less than we were anticipated to. Majority of the expenses being lower was because of being short on staff. But it was a very good year for us budget-wise and we'll move the next year with the single.
And that staff process, this is do not, by the way, that staff process of hiring process going through civil service, that's still going through the process.
Everything's been approved by council. There's two applicants that are being hired to replace the two vacancies. One will start August 18th and one will start August 22nd.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff? Okay. If not, we will receive and place on file the financial report as reported for June 2, 016. Okay. The next item on the agenda is oral presentations. This is a time when if you have something you would like to present before the commission that is not on today's amended Agenda, please state your name and address for the record and please come to the podium. Okay. If not, we will move on to our next order business and that would be new business. First item under new business is, and if you cannot hear me, let me know, I will lift my voice and speak louder. So please, if you cannot hear in the back, please let me know. Under new business, we have hearings, site plan amendments. The first one is a request by CAS CEO Corporation for a site plan amendment to the R4 RP Planned Residence District to allow for the construction of 6,436 square foot medical clinic and a 33-stall parking lot located directly to the east of 4015 Hurst Drive. That begins on page seven in your packet. And at this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating aye. Patty McGee do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, drawings and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 18, 2016. May I have a motion received and place this notice on file?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Eric in second that we receive and place this notice on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Staff report.
This is Andy from staff. This is a request to construct a new medical office with 33-stall parking lot. A request to construct the office would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area and would appear to be compatible with other professional office development in the area. A request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic and pedestrian conditions in the area. Site is served by Tower Park Drive and Hurst Drive, which are both classified as local streets. And West Sand Marlin Drive is just to the north of the site and is classified as a minor arterial street. And no access to the site will be gained from West Sand Marlin Drive. Site was rezoned from A1 Agricultural District to R4 RP Planned Residence District in February of 2004. Surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows. North is one-two family residences, zone R1. South is vacant development ground zone CP Planned Commercial and BP Business Park. East is vacant development ground zone R4 RP. And west is 40-15 Hurst Drive and vacant development ground. That was recently approved for development of the vet clinic, zone R4 RP. All necessary utilities are in the area to service the new development. The applicant is requesting to construct a 6,436 square foot medical office building to the east of 40-15 Hurst Drive. The area in question is zone R4 RP. And this zoning district allows for professional office and medical office development, as well as neighborhood commercial uses permitted in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, which may be specifically and selectively authorized by the city council upon recommendation of the planning and zoning commission. Proposed building is showing meeting the 20-foot rear yard setback as they are placing the building towards the rear of the lot closer to West Sand Marlin Drive. Zoning ordinance requires for medical offices that there be one parking space for every 200 square feet of floor area, which storage slash mechanical areas and restroom are being excluded from that area. There is approximately 306 square feet of storage area and 225 square feet of restroom area. Subtracting those amounts from the overall square footage of the building, which is 6,436, equals 5,905 square feet of area devoted to patron use, which would require 30 parking stalls. The proposed request is in excess of three parking stalls needed for that use. Structure would have 18-foot sidewalls and a flat roof with a peak in the middle of the building that reaches an overall height of 24 feet. Proposed structure would meet the height requirements for the zoning district, which is four stories or 48 feet. Fire has requested from the applicant's engineer hydrant locations, as well as details on the fire apparatus access. Staff is recommending that the request for site plan amendment to the R4 RP Planned Residence District directly east of 40-15 Hurst Drive be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. A request would not appear to have negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. And the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the overall surrounding area. And with the following condition, that the final site plan meets all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, drainage, et cetera.
Okay. Questions for staff?
I have questions. I think I have three. This is do not. I had a question about, I guess this is coming from the fire rescue department, I guess. This is on page five, it starts talking about midway down the page, it says, Jordan, I'm thinking that that's referring to Steve Jordan.
Yes.
Noted that he had sent these, had sent his questions to the consulting engineer on the project to get the hydrant locations and that was mentioned in the staff report too.
Right.
And then there's the second mini paragraph that's in that same section of the page. Have these questions been answered?
I know the fire marshal sent that to the applicant through email and possibly, I believe there's representatives here from the developer that could probably answer that question for you.
Okay. And then on page, let's see, page eight in the staff report, there's an acronym SWPPT.
Yep.
Can we explain what that acronym is?
Sure. It stands for Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan.
Okay.
That's part of the building permit process that they would have to submit to the engineering department as a part of that. Do you have specific questions on what it means?
No, I just had the question about what the acronym stood for. And so then the applicant or the person in the audience can expand more about hydrant locations.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I sent one on the fire. Is that fire, on page nine, fire, is that fire, fire marshal just says fire, is that just in general?
Yeah, just relating to the fire department. Yep.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but this is Bob Tyson. I did drive around there this weekend and I just kind of wanted to get a feel and what was it going to look like. And I think it'd be a great addition out there. So I'm just kind of glad we got that.
I don't know if this is a question that you can answer Tim, but is there a reason why this one little parcel is currently R4 RP when it's surrounded by CP and other?
I think the intent of that back in 2004, when it was rezoned to that, was to keep CP and BP uses away from those residents to the north of West Sand Marlin Drive. There were concerns raised back then, about 12 years ago. They did not want to see high intensity developments encroaching closer to those residential uses. So having it as an R4 RP does allow for a certain percentage of commercial, but primarily would develop as professional office uses, which seem to be a little more friendlier to the residential uses, more compatible.
It just seemed kind of strange that in amongst everything else here, it said this one parcel, so thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. At this time, for those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask you, please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking to the microphone.
David Benz, Bishop Engineering, 3501 104th Street in Urbandale, Iowa. We did address the fire marshal's comments. We, I will point out that we lost three parking stalls, so we are now at 30 parking stalls, which is the minimum, in order to accommodate some of their radiuses once we got their fire truck turning template. So, and also we widened out the bypass lane so the fire truck could get through there without going under the overhangs. So we lost three parking stalls. We're putting the fire hydrant at the southeast corner of the building, along with the trash enclosure. I just wanted to point that out. Apologize for not getting the plans back. We got one comment and I was expecting a few more, so I was just going to turn them all back in at once. And we just found out today there's only that one comment, so we'll get them up tomorrow.
Any questions for the applicant?
This is Hall. The diagram shows three handicap stalls currently with the 33 stalls.
Good point. We took it down to two.
Okay.
And what kind of a clinic are you building?
I will let the architect speak to that.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, is that it seems like the size of the clinic that you're proposing, that only two handicapped parking spots might be a little bit on the small side. I'd rather see it keep all three, if not increase it. But it depends on what kind of clinic. If you're dealing with orthopedics or are you dealing with pediatric or what are you doing?
I will let the architect speak to that.
I think it's urgent care. Good afternoon. Steve Domes, Casco, 10877 Watson Road, St. Louis, Missouri. In regards to the type of services, it would be more, what we like to refer to almost as retail medical. We will not be doing specialized services such as orthopedic. You know, it's not that somebody couldn't come in there that had obviously a sprained ankle or so forth. But the services are basically broad spread, but they're not services that would cause a patient to be incapable of essentially taking care of themselves. But I guess to answer your question, as far as the parking, you know, I don't believe our client, the owners, would have an issue with having a couple of additional spaces designated for handicapped. I believe the intent was right now just to show the minimum, but you know, I don't believe there would be any objection to designating another space or two as handicap parking.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is do not. So it would not interfere with the physical plans or the blueprint or architectural plans to add those two extra spaces that she's referring to?
Well, I would defer to the civil engineer as far as the size of the parking stall. The parking stall is the same here, David. Would we be actually, would we have the space available to, if need be, to designate another space or two?
We'd have, she, I think she was referring to one additional, if I'm not mistaken. We had three on the original plan and we took it down to two. We could add it back in. We'd need a, it wouldn't be a van accessible, it'd just be a traditional handicap stall, some other five foot of paving we'd add back in. We could add that in.
I'd like to see you do that.
This is Holdeman. For staff or anybody that wants to answer this, what would be the minimum number of handicap stalls?
Should be only one because it's under 50, right?
I think it's two actually, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe it's two. Yeah, is the minimum.
Okay.
That's by the ADA code.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to come for the audience to speak either for or against this request? So please state your name and address for the record. If not, I would ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Craig in second that we close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the hearing is closed. At this time, I turn it back to the commission for either final thoughts, questions or a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the amended site plan. And when I say amended, I'm saying that the one you're talking about that fits the turning radius of the fire trucks and so on. Hang on a second, I'm sorry. I should have had my reason thing here. So the request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions and it would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. And subject to the final site plan meeting all applicable city codes, regulation and so on.
Does that also, can I ask a question at this point?
Okay.
Does it, can I ask a question since he just made a motion?
As long as you can.
You can.
Okay. Does that also include the three handicap stalls or we just, or is the motion?
I was just saying the motion was to approve what they're, what he was talking about, the engineer, bringing forward. If you would like to add the third handicap stall, I had no difficulty with that.
So I can amend the motion that we're completed with the third?
Well, we haven't voted on a motion yet, so can I just start over?
You certainly can.
Okay. I will move that we approve the request for the amendment to the site plan.
Let me have a quick, is the client okay with having three handicap stalls? Okay.
Okay.
Now, I have a question about the motion. I just want to make sure that fire's questions about the fire hydrant and the site plan with the item that I brought up in the beginning of our discussion about that question, is that automatically going to be built into your motion or assumed as part of your motion?
Well, it was part of his site plan. He said they had the locations for the hydrants and as well as the turning radius for the fire trucks that they'd be able to get in.
And I did hear that they did answer fire's questions in his discussion, so.
As Craig minute and we'll let Craig finish, when he stated also that it's to follow all city, applicable city codes, that would be addressed underneath that, so you're good, Eric.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to start over because I forgot what it was. Sorry. I will, I will move that we approve the site plan request for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions. And the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera. And that the final site plan, which you talked about, also includes a third handicap stall.
Second. Clear?
Okay.
I'm second.
I did.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved by Craig in second that we recommend the request for approval for the site plan amendment in the R4 RP Planned Residence District directly to the east of 4015 Hurst Drive, approved for the reasons as stated. And with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. And that we also have the site plan include three handicap parking stalls. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion passes.
This is a recommendation. This will be set for city council on Monday at 5:30. Thank you.
Okay. The time is 4:24. Our next hearing for this afternoon, pardon me, is a request by VJ Engineering on the behalf of Heritage Square Real Estate for a site plan amendment to the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of an approximately 5,100 square foot retail building and a 40-stall parking lot located directly to the west of 200 East Ridgeway Avenue. That begins on page 29 in your packet. Staff report.
This is Western with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the traffic conditions. Vehicles would access the building from Ridgeway Avenue and also from a private drive to the east of the site. The site is on S1 Shopping District since the adoption of the ordinance, 1969. The surrounding zoning to the north is R3 Multiple Residences District, which is Covenant Medical Center. To the east is S1 Shopping Center District. To the south is Shopping District, multiple, to the west is S1 Shopping District, commercial and commercial businesses. The commercial development of the east and west took place in the 1970s and 80s. Wigan-François Health Care to the north was built in 1959. There are five 12-plexes along the south property line that will be, will consist of 60 detached garages and 72 service parking spaces that are being constructed directly to the south of the site in question. There is an 8-inch private sanitary sewer line that runs just south of the south property line to serve the former development. A 12-inch private storm sewer line extends north from the south storm sewer line along a portion of the western property line. The future land use map designates this area in question as commercial. The request be, would be in compliance with such designation. The site is located within the primary growth area as designated on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. The S1 Shopping District is intended to provide for areas of the community which are developed or will be soon as a moderate intensity commercial area. The S1 Shopping Center District areas are often associated with major traffic arterials and highways, and this particular area is located along west Ridgeway Avenue and directly east of Kimball Avenue. There's an existing strip mall to the west that has since, has existed since 1979 that is on S1 Shopping Center District. And staff feels that the site plan amendment request would be compatible with the existing development. As was stated earlier, there are five 12-plexes along the south with 60 detached garages and 72 parking spaces. Staff feels though that this new proposed development will not interfere with that residential development. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the site plan amendment in the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a 5,104 square foot, three-unit retail building and a 40-stall parking lot be approved for the following reasons. The site plan is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classifies the area as commercial. The site plan will create an additional infill development site in the primary growth area and subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. Any questions for staff?
I have one. Before we answer questions, I need to backtrack. That was my fault. I need to make this statement and have the motion open up the hearing and then we can move forward. So I apologize for that.
Yeah, I'll move way open the hearing. Retroactively.
Okay. I have to read the statement, but we can do that. Thank you. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating aye. Patty McGee do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 18, 2016. Craig has made the motion to receive and place this notice on file.
Second.
Second. Okay. It's been moved by Craig in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Any questions for staff?
I have a question generally. This is do not. Does the proposed development crowd or contribute to crowding of the area when adding to existing development or contribute to the congestion of the traffic patterns within the area? Because I assume that this is the area where on one side of the street, there's the Kimball Ridge Center. On the other side of the street, there's the, the mini mall or the strip mall and it's in the area of West High School, not too far away from, am I, am I guessing at the right geographical area?
Probably Old Shore Hospital.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the former Hardee's and Tokyo restaurant.
Okay. So that's, I'm assuming you're answering that that's not going to be an issue? My question's not going to be an issue?
No, we're basically just putting back in what's been there for quite a few years.
Okay.
Oh, we know that there's this Anderson with staff, there's sidewalk in that area as well for pedestrian movements. The traffic department is part of the technical review committee and they do not have any concerns with the project either.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Okay. For those of you who'd like to speak for or against this request, we ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. And I'll also ask the commission also, state your name for the record before speaking. And I'll also ask the commission also state your name for the record before speaking. Okay, if not, I would ask for a motion to close the hearing.
I will make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, it's been moved by Bob and seconded that we close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The hearing is closed. I would turn it back to the commission for final thoughts, questions, or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan amendment request. The site plan is in accordance with the comprehensive and future land use map. And the site plan will create an additional infill development site with the primary growth area. Subject to the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Mike and seconded that we approve the request of the site plan amendment in the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a 5,104 square foot, three-unit retail building and a 40-stall parking lot. We approve the reasons as stated and subject to the conditions that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The time now is 4:31. Our next item on the agenda is under vacates and encroachment agreements. The first one is a request by Village Creek Rentals to vacate a 16-foot by 126-foot or 2,016-square-foot area platted alley located directly to the north of 1118 Amesboro Avenue. And that begins on page 41 in the packet. Staff report.
Abby Greenwood, planning intern. The proposed vacate is approximately 16 feet by 126 feet and is intended to improve the alley condition by paving it. It would not appear the vacation would have a negative impact on the surrounding area or other surrounding area land uses. The proposed vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions in the area. Roads in the general area in question are Amesboro Avenue, which is classified as a minor arterial, University Avenue, which is classified as a principal arterial, University Avenue, Frontage Road, which is classified as a local road, and Schalmers Avenue, which is classified as a local road. The surrounding area is primarily commercial development with some single-family residences. The vacate would not appear to have a negative impact upon drainage in the area. There is a four-inch drainage sewer that travels adjacent to the area in question. And this should be maintained after the vacate to facilitate proper drainage. Due to the applicant paving alley after it is vacated, a storm water management plan will need to be submitted to the engineering department. There is a 72-inch storm sewer that is located east of the alley in question in Amesboro Avenue and also an 18-inch sanitary sewer located in the east of the alley in question in Amesboro Avenue. Mid-American Energy has requested that easement be retained over the north 10 feet of the vacated alley. The applicant is requesting to vacate a rectangular portion of the public alleyway directly north of 1118 Amesboro Avenue and will be approximately 16 feet by 126 feet in size. The applicant does not want to close off the alley or existing parking lot and will still allow through traffic. The other adjoining property owners to the portion of the alley to be vacated do not wish to purchase any portion of the alley. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to vacate the alleyway directly north of 1118 Amesboro Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate the right-of-way would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. The request to vacate the right-of-way would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian or traffic conditions in the area. It would not appear that there is no need for the access right-of-way for any current future roadway purposes. And subject to the following condition, that a utility easement is retained over the north 10 feet of the vacated alleyway.
Questions for staff? If not, thank you, Abby.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Holdaman. I guess I do have a question, and I don't know if this is the appropriate place. But if we recommend vacation of the alley, then how do they... What do we do about setting a price? Or don't we care about that?
This is Anderson with staff. The city of Waterloo has a sale of property policy that we would talk to the applicant about. Essentially, the sale of property policy would set the value of the alley at the same price per square foot as the abutting land is for the average assessed value.
Okay.
Then there's also provisions in there that if they're making improvements to it that'll add taxable value to the site, that could be deducted off the asking price as well. So we'll have to sit down and figure out exactly what the investment is going back into it and what that... Because I think I read something in here about a dollar.
Yeah.
And that's what brought my, brought the question up.
So the dollar does not apply to this transaction?
It may. Again, it'll depend on if he's going back and investing in a new parking lot or something like that and working with the assessor's office. That's going to raise the taxable value. They're able to count the added taxable value against the portion for up to eight years for areas that are within the consolidated urban revitalization area, which this is. So we'd look at that return back for an eight-year period to deduct that off the asking price.
All right, thank you. Who's responsible for maintenance today of the alley?
The city of Waterloo.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this request, we ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. I also ask the commission to state your name before speaking. Okay, if not, I would turn it back to the commission for final thoughts, comments, questions, or motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the vacate of the alleyway directly north of 1118 Amesboro Avenue. As a request to vacate the right-of-way would not appear to have negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate the right-of-way would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or traffic conditions. And it would not appear that there is a need for access right-of-way for current or future road use purposes. And with the following conditions, that the utility easement is retained over the north 10 feet of the vacated alleyway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Carol and seconded that we approve the request to vacate the alleyway directly north of 1118 Amesboro Avenue be approved for the reasons as stated and subject to the following condition, that a utility easement is retained over the north 10 feet of the vacated alley. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Time now is 4:38. A second request is by BCS Properties for an encroachment agreement to allow existing freestanding pole sign to encroach 11.33 feet into a sanitary sewer easement directly south and adjacent to 1850 Restwood Highway Avenue. And that begins on page 51 in your packet. Staff report.
Andere staff. Applicant is requesting the encroachment agreement to allow the sign that was erroneously built within the new dedicated easement to remain. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding development area as the sign sits upon the end of the parking area in a normal sign location. Problem arises that a new sanitary sewer easement was dedicated in this area that is 15 feet wide to allow access to the sewer if it were to need repair from both the north and south sides of the sewer. Sewer would still appear to be accessible from the south side as a specific location if it were to need repairs or maintenance. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Applicants are the developers of new buildings and new lots being platted in the area. They are the owners of the land who dedicated the easement. Sign location which encroaches 11.33 feet into the 15-foot easement was a mistake by the newness of the easement not yet showing on all maps by the locations of the sign. With the right-of-way being on the south side of the 15-foot sewer easement, it would appear this particular request would still give sufficient room for excavation, et cetera, if required for maintenance and/or repair of the sewer main in the future. While not ideal and definitely not something to further encourage in the future, this mistake would appear to be better resolved through the use of the encroachment agreement. And having to move the sign out of the easement. Also note that the encroachment agreement will note that in this, if the sign were, is ever damaged or replaced to a certain degree, it would be moved outside of the easement in that case of replacement. This is staff's recommendation that the request be approved for the encroachment agreement for the following reasons. One, it would not appear to have negative impact on the surrounding area. Two, the request would not appear to have negative impact on further servicing the sewer main in the area due to the abutting right-of-way along the southern side of the easement. And with the condition that there be a fully signed and executed encroachment agreement.
Questions for staff?
This is Holdaman. I have just one. In the information we got in the packet, it mentioned something about an agreement with the applicant that if the sign were to be damaged by the city, it needed to get into the sewer and had to remove part of the sign, that it would be at the expense of the applicant.
The owner.
Property owner, right?
Yes.
Okay. Should we not put that in here, too?
That could be added as a condition if you'd like. But that is typically a condition that's already written into the encroachment agreement.
Oh, okay. That's, so that, I guess that's what I was asking.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question, but I don't know if this is to the right item. So I'm just gonna ask the question, and somebody can tell me if I'm referring to the wrong item. Is this the item two on page six, at the bottom of page six, just before Mr. Andere's signature? Request by BCS Properties for an encroachment agreement? Am I referring to the right item?
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, there's a reference here in the last paragraph before the signature that you, Mr. Andere, noted that you received an email from Waste Management Services Director with his concerns over the request. And I'm just asking, were these concerns addressed? And so everybody is happy?
That will be, that's typical wording that we do add into our encroachment agreements. We had a similar request for University of Iowa Community Credit Union sign. Where in that agreement, it is written that the city, any of the utility companies, any designees for the right-of-way are held harmless. And the city is not responsible if there is any damages to that sign if the sewer were to be serviced.
So all these, the concerns as referred to in the email were...
Yes.
Were addressed and everybody's okay?
Yeah, this is Anderson with staff. We did receive, we sent a sample encroachment agreement to Mr. Holmbrecher, and he did respond back by email saying that this did address his concerns.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
I'd make a recommend, I'd make the motion to approve the encroachment agreement with the condition that a fully signed and executed encroachment agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Tavis and seconded that the request for the encroachment agreement be approved for the reasons stated and subject to the following condition, that a fully signed and executed encroachment agreement is created. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The time now is 4:44. This would be a new item in the, under the amended agenda, under special permits. So I refer to the additional information we're given. This is a request by Structure Architects on behalf of Blackhawk County Conservation for a special permit for the construction of a 4,273-square-foot addition to the Hartman Reserve Nature Center with an R1 1 and 2 family residence district located at 623 to 657 Reserve Drive. That is found in the additional information that was presented. Staff report.
Andere staff again. The applicant is requesting to construct the 4,273-square-foot addition onto the east side of the main Hartman Reserve Nature Center building located at 623, 657 Reserve Drive. The area in question is primarily wooded, with the nearest house being 500 feet to the northwest of the building. And the proposed request would not appear to negatively impact the surrounding area. Site is zoned R1, 1 and 2 family residence district has been zoned as such since 1969. Also to the north is land zoned R1, which is wooded. South is existing residential development and wooded land zoned R1. East is also wooded land and residences zoned R1 as well as to the west. Some 100-year and 500-year floodplain encroach on the far northern portions of the property. However, no portion of the area where the new addition will be located is within a special flood hazard area. The future land use map designates this area as parks, open spaces, schools, airport, government facilities, and public areas. The proposed special permit would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area, as the building is owned by a government agency. As noted in, it would be a 4,273-square-foot addition to the east of the main building. Proposed structure will meet all required setbacks from property lines being 170 feet from its closest property line. Structure will be one-story in height and have numerous large windows. The use of the addition will be for gathering space and multipurpose uses. Many local students utilize the center for educational purposes. And the new addition will house those students for things such as field trips. Assembly halls, the assembly hall of the new addition is approximately 2,002 square feet. And has a rated occupancy of 134 square feet based on 15 square feet per person. Based on that rated occupancy, this will require 34 parking spaces. There are also future plans to create 1,211 square feet of assembly space in the lower level with an occupancy of 81, which would require another 21 stalls. There are 55 parking stalls upon the site, so all current and future parking requirements are being met. Staff recommends that the request for a special permit located at 623, 657 Reserve Drive be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. And the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the traffic conditions in the area. And the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area.
Questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not. I'm assuming that what I'm about to say is the case. But this River Hills School or the school district that has jurisdiction over River Hills School did not have any issues with the area?
No, and I believe that that is owned by Area 267, so...
Okay.
But no objections.
This is Dak. I just have a question on this. One of the uses that you're suggesting is a field trip. Is this building also going to be available for the public if such as a club or if you needed a place to meet at?
Such as like receptions or...
Yes, because with the pipe hacks that are closing, that has been a concern, I know for Cedar Falls, but in Waterloo, we have several options. I was wondering if this was something that would be used for that purpose or...
And I believe there is a representative from the county here that probably could answer that question for you.
Vern Fish, 3488 Kingswood Place. My work address is 1634 West Airline Highway, so pick whatever you want. Yes, the nature center has traditionally been used for school field trips and for building rentals. So it would serve that purpose.
Question from Mr. Fish. Sorry. I just wanted, I just wanted you to sit down and I'll have to get right back. If it were for public, let's say when it's rented for like a reception or something along those lines, how many people will it, will it seat?
I think we've estimated around 100 or so. I don't have the exact number, but somewhere in that range.
So the parking would be adequate at that?
Yeah, and that's always a challenge. We have to make sure the groups understand this is how much parking we have. And if you bring more than that, then you're exceeding capacity. To be real, part of what we're trying to do is protect that natural area. We don't want... We don't want 1,000 people to show up. We don't have space for them.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else in the audience at this time who'd like to speak for or against this? I would ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and also as members of commission, also state your name before speaking in the microphone. If not, I turn it back to the commission for final thoughts, comments, or a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the special request... Special permit?
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Tavis and seconded that we approve the request for a special permit located at 623 through 657 Reserve Drive, and it be approved for the reasons stated in the packet. And is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, this time, we're at our final item, which is discussion. Anyone have any thoughts, items you'd like to bring up? Carol?
I was in a conversation with Eric earlier about the city or county courthouse. When we recommended there being able to put a new structure in over there, it was my understanding that it was agreed upon that they were going to be putting some kind of filter over there, whether it be trees, a fence, something. And this was over a year ago, and it still has not been done. And my question is, is it going to be done? And how long are we going to continue giving the county to get this finished so that the community doesn't have to look at the eyesore?
This is Schrader with staff. Anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, Noel or staff, but I believe that item went before the Planning and Zoning Commission and got a recommendation, but then was withdrawn by the applicant before it went to the Board of Adjustment. So, although the Planning Commission made a recommendation for screening, there was no final action on that. And I, as I recall, because they were only building a generator, it was considered to not be a structure, so therefore, there wasn't an ordinance requirement that they have to do screening. We can look into that further, but as I understand it, the Board of Supervisors has indicated that they still want to review what options they have for any additional type of screening. I know that they ran into some issues with the proximity to some underground utilities, I think specifically a fiber optic line, and they originally were not aware that the fire code was going to require that they put up bollards to protect it from... Because of its proximity to the street to protect it from potential being hit by a moving vehicle hazard. So, those bollards have kind of changed what they would have room for as well. But last I had heard, they were still interested in reviewing what options there might be. So, I will touch base with the county to try and see if there's still any discussion on that, but we will also review that for if there's any requirement that the city could place on that to force them. I don't know that there is, but I will review that for sure.
I would appreciate it. I think the citizens of Waterloo would appreciate it and the people that are coming down here on a daily basis and having to look at that, because it is a nice look. If nothing else, painted to blend in with the building, but white, you know, stark white is just not a real blend. So, thank you.
And I had a question, and maybe you've already answered that. Since we approved that as a commission, would that be in the condition? Is that something that... Does it...
No, the Planning Commission's just a recommending body, so until either, you know, if it's... If you're making a recommendation to the council until they've taken action, or if you're making a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment, until they're taking action, that's those... Conditions aren't effective until there's final action by either council or Board of Adjustment, depending on the request.
Okay. I have a question, but it's a separate question than what the previous question was. My question is, the items that were tabled from the June 2016 meeting, and I think... And I'm not sure what to call the items, because I'm not sure what the titles were entitled on the agenda, but it was about...
The plats.
The plats and the flooding... There were flooding and drainage questions about the area and whether everything was compatible. When were those tabled items going to be coming back to the commission?
Yeah, there were four items on the agenda for essentially two different requests: a subdivision plat along Wagner Road up by the airport, and a subdivision plat in the northeast industrial park, both being requests by the City of Waterloo, city-owned land that the city is plating into industrial lots. There was both the preliminary plat and the final plat of both sites, so that was four different requests. The preliminary plats were recommended for approval. The final plats were tabled. The engineer is still... He was close to having it ready to go for this meeting, but he's still working on some final grading plans, but we would hope to have those back on next month's agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments?
Question for staff. The emails today about the chair... You know, city administrator for a chair position. Did you have a chance to get any legal opinions?
This is Anderson with staff. We have forwarded a lot of the information in terms of our rules and state code provisions to the attorney's office, and we're waiting for an answer back from them. We did not hear back from legal yet to find out what options are out there, and when we get those, we'll definitely share those with the commission.
Any other items for discussion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Tavis and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.